Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. City Clerk, may we have a roll call please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
Yes, well, yes, Mr. Mayor. Council met in closed session to discuss the matters that are reflected on the open session agenda. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance which will be led by Mayor Pro-Tim Mike Hen, followed by the invocation by Reverend Richard Conwisher of St. Andrews Presbyterian Church.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we're so thankful for tonight, for the privilege of what it means to serve this community of Newport Beach. And most of all, God, we want for you to grant conscience and sound judgment for the leaders who are gathered here. But we also pray, oh God, that you will keep our dreams alive. Our dreams of a community where good is crowned with brotherhood and where every flaw that we have is mended by your grace. May we only fear tonight, oh God, that our spirits will be too frail to meet the demands of tomorrow, and that our hearts may grow faint before the responsibilities of our own citizenship. May we only fear that our resolve may falter and seek shelter in the safety of the past, or the comfort of keeping things just as they are. And so grant us wisdom and courage tonight to cripple the forces of crime, to improve the quality of our education, to open the doors of opportunity for the deprived and neglected, and for all who would contribute to this community and not simply take from it, or even those who would complain about the worst in it. And so let us carry with us tonight, oh God, into the future, the courage that can only come from above, to stand against evil and suffering armed solely with the power of sacrifice. Call to us that high and rare burden of righteousness still looking and still searching for a more peaceful, gentle, and faithful neighborhoods, not only happy but harmonious, not only wise but good. And so finally tonight, God, while we may come from different traditions, and while may the collective hearts in this room hold a variety of convictions, may our words and even our souls diverge, but as I lead this prayer tonight, I offer it in the only way that I know how. In the humble and simple name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend, and welcome to, I think this might be your first time to have come before the city council. We welcome you both to St. Andrews, and where you've been for a while now, and to the city council. Thanks for being with us tonight.
It's good to be here, I hope you'll be back any time.
Thank you. We have several presentations to make today, and the first one is to someone who has been very special to the city, and that is the retiring head of the local Army Corps of Engineers, Colonel Thomas Magnus IV. And Colonel, if I could ask you to come to the podium, what I'd like to do is read this proclamation, and then I'll ask Councilmember Daigle to join me in this presentation. Whereas Colonel Thomas Magnus, a West Point graduate and decorated Desert Storm veteran, assumed command of the Los Angeles District US Army Corps of Engineers on July 10, 2007. And whereas he has provided timely guidance for the four Newport Beach federal projects: Upper Newport Bay Ecosystem Project, the Lower Newport Bay Dredging Project, the Santa Ana Marsh Restoration, and the Newport Growing Field Sand Replenishment. And whereas Colonel Magnus has personally availed himself on numerous occasions to meet with the city council members and city staff to update progress and offer guidance and support for the development and implementation of the Newport Beach projects. And whereas the Colonel played a pivotal role in the final phase of the Upper Newport Bay Ecosystem Project by directing corps staff to respond quickly for the contract award of this ARA-funded project, thus ensuring its completion. And whereas Colonel Magnus has emphasized the Newport Beach's regional approach for the federal projects as part of the corps' budget review process, including providing responses to inquiries from key congressional committee members. And whereas he has directed corps district staff to remain actively engaged with city of Newport Beach by providing input and information on a regular basis for the city's federal projects. And whereas during Colonel Magnus' tenure as district commander, the corps' relationship with the city has resulted in an effective partnership. Now therefore, I, Keith D. Curry, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, and on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize and honor Colonel Thomas H. Magnus IV for his hard work and dedication, and wish him well in his next assignment.
Well, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you very much, and I'm honored and humbled to be in this, in these chambers and to receive this proclamation. You began your remarks by noting that I was retiring. I would say, I'm going to Afghanistan. Now, I don't know how you rank those.
Afghanistan, Newport.
And I wish I was staying, because this is the best job I'll ever have. I've had three years to run a billion-dollar company, and to do it in places like Newport Beach, it doesn't get any better than this opportunity that I've had. I'm at the point in my tenure where I am as liberated as I will ever be, when I can say with full conviction that I can say or do anything I want, because what could they do to me? They could send me to Afghanistan. I feel very comfortable in my own shoes, in my own boots at this point. It has been a great opportunity to see the stars align, if you will, on a couple of projects. One certainly was the Upper Bay, and we were making progress and we were moving that along, but to be bestowed with the gift of stimulus funds that would do what those funds were designed to do, which was to stimulate the economy, generate jobs, and to finish projects that the corps had on its books and needed to complete. And that certainly is one, and I think there will be a legacy of stewardship that both the corps and the city will be very proud of for many years to come, as they see the migratory birds come and do what they do in the Upper Bay. I think that'll be, you know, a terrific record in and of itself. But the second part is in the Lower Bay, where, as we met, many of us around this table right here, and just even a few years ago, trying to get something off the ground and to get it started, and it was going nowhere. And we had not dredged the harbor in a long time, and really had no prognosis for when, if ever, we would. And then, and then we looked at the problem different. And if I could kind of leave with that thought, which is, when people work together and don't care about the credit, but they only seek solutions that generate the kind of win-win that I think we're all charged with finding, I think that's what we did on this project. We found a way to move it into the budget, to rank it a little bit higher, just high enough, maybe one above the cut line, but it is now a funded project, funded in the 2010 budget by the president, funded in the 2011 budget by the president, and with our congressional delegation, both in the House and the Senate. I have no doubt that this project will be in construction next year. And I think, you know, working together with people that care not for the credit, but only for the completion, and what it will do for the people that we all serve, I think it's something we can be very proud of. I'm happy to have worked with you all, I will miss you, I won't be far away. Oh, I guess I will be far away. You could come and visit me. But more likely, it'll be me in about a year coming back to visit you, and I can't wait to see the things that you will do in my absence with my replacement, and I know they will continue to be a very great and a powerful service to this community. So thank you very much for the proclamation and for the chance to be with you both tonight and for the last three years. Thank you very much.
Thank you Colonel, and thank you for your service. We have two distinguished groups of students here tonight to recognize, and the first are the 2010 Rotary Student Exchange, Okazaki, Japan. I see Kent Moore out in the audience, so Kent, if you'd like to come to the podium and introduce the students that were here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Kent Moore, and I'm with the Newport Beach Sister City Association. And I bring you greetings from Okazaki, especially from your old friend, Mr. Masao Kato, who wishes you all the best. With me tonight are six Wendell Fish Rotary Student Exchange students, along with the girls chaperone, Mrs. Dory Ford, and our Sister City President, Sherri Penny Myers. Sherri and Dory, would you please stand and be recognized this time? As some of you may recall, both Dory's and Sherri's son were members of the student exchange a few years ago. Our six ambassadors this year are Delaney McCardle of Newport Harbor High School, Bailey Davidson of Newport Harbor High, Victoria Lewis of Newport Harbor High, Jenna Funston of Corona Del Mar High, Campbell Woods, Corona Del Mar High, and Teddy Parks of Corona Del Mar High School. Actually, these are the same students who were selected last year, only to learn that the exchange had to be canceled because of the international swine flu scare that we all remember. Then, after careful consideration, the Rotary Club of Newport Balboa broke from tradition, and rather than interviewing a new group, informed these once very disappointed students that they would be able to participate this year. Rotary felt that this was the only fair thing to do, and I think our students are pretty happy with their decision, aren't they? Our student ambassadors would like to introduce themselves to you and the city of Newport Beach, starting with Teddy Park.
Hi, my name is Teddy Parks, and I'm a freshman at Corona Del Mar High School, and I would like to thank you for giving me this amazing opportunity to travel to Okazaki, Japan, and I'm really excited, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jenna Funston, I'm a freshman at Corona Del Mar too, and I'm really excited to go to Japan, thank you for the opportunity.
Hi, I'm Bailey Davidson, I'm a freshman at Newport Harbor High School, and I'm very excited to represent Newport Beach and the city of Okazaki, Japan. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Victoria Lewis, I'm a freshman at Newport Harbor High School, and I'm very excited to learn about the culture of Japan. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Delaney McCardle, from Newport Harbor, I'm a freshman, and I just want to say thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to represent Newport Beach.
Hi, I'm Campbell Woods from Corona Del Mar High School. I'm really thrilled to be an ambassador and represent Newport Beach at Okazaki, Japan, and I thank you.
Again, council, the Sister City Association and Rotary greatly appreciate the wonderful support of this program, and we hope to continue this relationship with the city for many, many more years to come. And now I know that the students would love to stick around tonight and witness more of municipal decision-making and issues discussed, but this is finals season, and...
Is that NBA finals?
We think it's best that they get home quickly and resume their homework assignments, so thank you so much for everything.
Which one of them is going to be designated as the official arm wrestler for your sumo wrestler?
Well, we haven't, we haven't picked that person yet, but I'm one of the chaperones this year, I'll probably arm wrestle the sumo wrestler, but I'll never do as well as Homer Blutowski did. Thanks.
Well, I know all of our student ambassadors are going to represent the city very well, and I would like you to give our personal good wishes in regards to Mayor Shibata and the folks at the Okazaki Rotary Clubs, and certainly our good friend Kato, whom you'll see, I'm sure, while you're in Japan, and give with them the good wishes from everybody in the city of Newport Beach for this longstanding, now in its 26th year, relationship as a sister city between Okazaki and Newport Beach. So I'll come down and do a quick photo. It is now time for the annual report of the Newport Beach Youth Council. I started my political career as a youth commissioner a long time ago, so I know we've got some budding statesmen out there, and we look forward to the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. First of all, I have to say, on behalf of myself and Recreation Supervisor Raquel Valdez, it's been our pleasure to be the advisors to the youth council this year for the Recreation Department. They have been the most wonderful pleasure to work with, I told them that a little bit earlier, and very definitely a bright spot in our months. So thank you very much from Raquel and I. The youth council was formed 24 years ago, in 1986, and its mission is basically twofold, to advise the city and the city council on issues pertaining to youth, and also to advise the Recreation Department on youth, on teen programming specifically. We currently have 22 members on this year's youth council, and the schools represented include, in addition to Corona Del Mar and Newport Harbor High Schools, we also have representatives from Sage Hill, the Orange County High School of the Performing Arts, and Modern Day. Now, you've heard enough from me, so I'm going to turn it over to one of the youth council's vice chairs, David Fink. If you would come up, he's going to share their activities this year via the PowerPoint
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is David Fink, and, here's the PowerPoint. Okay, so the youth council primarily promotes youth involvement and interest in community affairs through our activities. We do various activities such as Winter Wonderland, Easter Egg Hunt, service activities, we do fundraisers, we have monthly meetings where we have guest speakers. Winter Wonderland, we had members working, selling food, taking pictures of Santa Claus, helping at the booths, we helped make arts and crafts, and we raised money for city activities. We did the same thing at the Spring Egg Hunt, except Santa was replaced with the Easter Bunny. Food was the same. And Youth Government Day is probably my favorite event of the year, I can't speak for anyone else. We usually have about 40, 40, 50 high school kids come out, we shadow members, employees of different departments for a couple hours, and then we have a city council meeting. I've had the honor and privilege of serving on the planning board, city council, city attorney, and administrative services. And the mock city council meeting is always a pleasure, it's, everyone tries to get in their say, it's always very interesting. And we had some very nice guest speakers this year, thank you so much to the Newport Beach Police Department. We had guest speakers with their drug sniffing dogs, we had SWAT department come, fire department, green planning task force, and building department, we learned about the new city hall. And thank you so much to all our guest speakers, we appreciate it. And we have some more future goals, we didn't get in everything we wanted to do this year, but next year we are going to have a basketball tournament for autism. We weren't able to help out with the Special Olympics this year, but we definitely are looking forward to doing that next year, and we look forward to continuing to be a positive force in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you especially... And I'd like to introduce our board members for the Newport Beach Youth Council, our president, Ruud Klajie, our secretary, Alex Morrison, our service project chairs, A.J. Radding and Jason Sernia, Yasmin Izadi, my co-vice chair. And just a big thank you to Raquel and Dan.
Steve, why don't you go on down? Oh, I can't stand in the back, I can't. We want to look at this guy next, here we go.
Okay, one, two, three, and take one more please. One, two, three.
Okay, notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for announcements on matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, Back Bay Science Center, there's a lot of efforts by the city council over the years to get that facility up and running. And this weekend, the kids in the community have the opportunity to participate in a lab, and it's a whodunit, an ecology-based CSI. And so you'll have the opportunity to solve some puzzles of the Back Bay using DNA analysis and chromatography, so pretty good stuff if you're in the grade seven to 12. So if you'd like to register, you need to give Rita a call at 644-3038, and that will take place this Saturday, Back Bay Science Center, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Earlier this evening, we honored Colonel Magnus, and he really helped us get into the end zone with the Upper Bay project. And along with the city council was instrumental in getting things initiated on the Lower Bay, and really, you know, the council's strategic plan to eliminate hurdles, these technical hurdles, is what helped get the attention of federal government. And now we have the Rhine Channel, and I mention that because it's the chance of a lifetime to be able to go to Long Beach, Port Long Beach potentially, and dispose of some sediments. Now, we also have the opportunity to help our citizens in a very significant way, and specifically those that live along the West Lido Channel. And when our Bay Issues Committee met, myself, councilmembers Gardner and Selich, it was our recommendation to include those properties in the mitigated negative deck, it's this environmental analysis. And our thinking was, at the very least, at the minimum, we would have our citizens be permit-ready. Now, logistically, it may not be possible to carry all of their sediments as well, but I think to get them, or I know to get them permit-ready would be a huge service to them. And so I'm somewhat dismayed that the mitigated negative deck may not include that, so we also have a new assistant city manager, welcome aboard, I'm sure she'll be introduced properly, and perhaps if it's something that she could look at and evaluate, I would greatly appreciate that, and I think the citizens of the West Lido Channel would as well, so thank you.
Councilmember Daigle, or, Councilmember Gardner.
Sorry, actually Councilwoman Gardner's going to give them the announcement, we're going to, we should work it out that way, but it's the, it's the bike ride, if you want to talk about that one too.
We are updating our zoning ordinances to match our new general plan. For those of you who live in Corona Del Mar, there's an important meeting this Thursday at 6:30 here in council chambers. Corona Del Mar... Corona Mar, there's a proposal to change the way we measure what you can build, and I don't want to go into details because it would take forever, but you can go to cdmra.org to get more information so you can be prepared when you come to the meeting. I was at a meeting recently, and it was suggested that there are a number of bond, uh, funds being released, Prop 84 and others, finally, and we have asked our consultant, Dave Meyerson, who was, has been working with us on Banning Ranch funding, to see if there are any opportunities there for the Banning Ranch project for purchase, so we'll get a report back on that. To my left, there's a poster, the Corona Mar 5K went off beautifully again, the group that puts that on just does a great job, and the city's a cosponsor, and we get money for our recreation departments from some of the proceeds. I'm almost finished, guys. Would like rec staff to come back with a proposal for the bike ride, to see if we want to make it a 13th event. And finally, on sandcastle, the, the tree issue, to have staff come back with a proposal to see if we can find something that would alleviate their concerns. Thank you.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes, last Tuesday, I attended an event at the John and Donna Crean, or Donna and John Crean Mariners Library, in which we said our farewells to Teresa Chase, who has spent the last eight years on our Library Board of Trustees. She got involved in that particular library when we had an opportunity to get state grant funds, and she, along with several helpers, was able to raise a million dollars in a very short period of time, which was the matching funds for that library, and we got the state grant. And Teresa served, I believe, at least five years as the Chairman of the Board of Library Trustees, and she is now moving to Los Angeles, and just as her eight-year term is, is completed, and, and so I, I think that she has enjoyed her stay, but the city of Newport Beach has really had a wonderful benefit from her being a part of the Library Board. And, secondly, give you a six-month update on my quest to walk all the streets in the city. During my last year on the City Council, I've now completed 363 miles in 108 days, have completed almost everything on the easterly side of the bay, and am down to everything northerly of Mariners. However, I, I would like to have some, some help from the citizens in inviting me into Newport Ridge North, Newport Homeowners Association across from the Bonita Creek Park, Harbor Cove, Island Lagoon, and Linda Isle, so that if you can extend that invitation, I'd appreciate it, you can get ahold of me through the City Clerk or the City Manager's office, or my phone number is (949) 646-3133. So, thank you very much.
Guess now we know who has the effective gate cards. Councilmember Selich.
Yes, last Sunday was the 17th Annual Balboa Island Parade, and I'd like to congratulate the Balboa Island Improvement Association and all the volunteers on Balboa Island that worked to make it such a great event, kicks off the summer season, it's the second happiest day of the year on Balboa Island, the happiest day is the end of the summer when all the tourists go home, but they seem to make it a better event every year, and it was just a terrific event this year, great weather, a lot of folks turned out, it really is a small-town, old-time, America kind of event, and it just went off really terrifically. So, congratulations to the BIA and all the volunteers.
Councilmember Rosansky.
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hen.
I don't have anything, thank you.
It was my pleasure on the 26th of May to participate in an event sponsored jointly by the Orange County Museum of Art and the Newport Beach Public Library on art in public spaces. We had an event that started in the museum and then moved to the library to talk about how art can augment public spaces, and I think there's some real exciting ideas of how the museum and the city can work together to advance that here in Newport Beach. Also, during the course of last week, I was privileged to participate in the Character Counts Awards at Inson and Corona Del Mar Middle Schools. These are programs based on the Michael Josephson Program to develop character and ethics among young people, and it was really very, very heartwarming to see how young people are taking to this, these lessons and applying them in their own lives. Along with many of my colleagues, we attended the Convention and Visitors Bureau Annual Dinner to hear about how Newport Beach is promoted. You know, if you get off an airplane in London, England, you have a good chance of getting into one of those cabs that's been shrink-wrapped to advertise Newport Beach, and it's really sort of exciting to see how they're carrying the message overseas to bring people into our community. Saturday, I was able to speak at the annual meeting for SPON and talk about what we're doing in Newport Beach, both to contain our budget, but also to deliver services, and SPON is one of those groups who's been involved in the community and helped make the community a better place for many, many years. And then finally, on Saturday night, I was able to attend the Back Bay Friends, Naturalists and Friends Bye Bye Birdie fundraiser, which was held at the Moot Center, the birds are migrating, which is why the, the event was named the way it was, but a great crowd turned out for that on Saturday. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Kiff.
Tag on to council announcement time. I'd like to introduce a new face here at the staff table, and that is Dana Smith, who is, I appointed as the Assistant City Manager. So Dana went through a fairly grueling recruitment to arrive here, we're glad she did, I'm going to ask her just to make a, take a few minutes worth of comments to introduce herself and tell a little bit about her background.
Great, he didn't tell me he was going to do that.
No surprise.
It's really a pleasure to be here, um, yes, thank you, it's very, very much a pleasure to be here. I come to Newport Beach by way of City of Napa, where I spent the last three years as the Assistant City Manager, focusing on development, engineering, public works, Army Corps issues, might have heard of the wine train, that was one of ours. Before that, City of Chulavista, and before that, I was the executive officer here at LaFco for 10 years, during most of the 90s, a little bit into 2000. So it's very, very nice to be back in Orange County, it feels comfortable, and I look forward to serving you, thank you.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Dana has the very good taste of living Corona Del Mar.
Excellent. Okay, next item is the Consent Calendar. Madam City Clerk.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, Items 1 through 25, and supplemental Item S-31, and also noting the additional recommendation for Item 24, are considered by council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the desk.
Thank you. Any items to pull from the consent calendar, Mr. Selich.
I have none.
Councilman Rosansky.
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hen.
None.
Councilmember Daigle.
Uh, none to pull, but I did want to note our continued progress with the Jamboree Bridge widening, and expressed my appreciation to Public Works for that, so thank you.
Councilman McGruder.
None also, but on 18, which is the farmer's market, just a note that I was reading an article that says, not only can these be beneficial as far as a little bit of profit, but they really have a tremendous impact on the community, that they, they estimated that between six and 10 public interfaces with people, when you go to a farmer's market as opposed to going to your, just a regular market, so it really does help the fabric of the community, so this is a great idea to have another one.
Absolutely. I have none. Councilmember Webb. And I have none. Mr. City Manager, do you have any items to pull?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a, a couple of them. Uh, one, on Item 19, I don't need to pull that item, but I would be recommending a deletion of Action B, we don't need to do a budget amendment to achieve the costs associated with that Dory Fleet emergency repair. Um, on Item 20, I'm, I'm going to ask to pull that one for a slight adjustment to the recommendation that the Public Works Director will mention. I will also note that on Item S-31, in case anyone is curious, uh, because we had a large, fairly detailed presentation about the Fourth of July, that the ordinance you're adopting allows for a larger closure than we're asking for, we basically didn't want to change the ordinance just in case something wacko happened, so if anyone had any questions, we'll be that precise, that, that's why that exists. So, um, that can stay on, if you'd please pull Item 20 and the proposed alternate by deletion, deleting Item B on Number 19.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to pull a item from the consent calendar?
Hi, members of council, I'd like to pull Item 23.
Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion on the balance of the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Consent Calendar Items 1 through 25, plus supplemental Item Number S-31, except for the additional, noting the additional recommendation for Item Number 24, and for Item Number 19, the deletion of Action B, and pulling Item Numbers 20 and 23.
Okay, motion second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 20.
Mayor, members of council, the reason why we wanted to discuss this with you tonight, this project is the award of the San Miguel Street Improvements Project, and the reason we wanted to kind of pull this was because after the agenda was printed, we became aware of there might be an opportunity to, um, there might be a balance of CIOSA funds available that could apply to this project, so we were asking for the, the council to authorize the staff, in lieu of amending the, doing a budget amendment, calling for all of the money coming from the public benefit agreement between the city and the Irvine Company, that we supplement that with CIOSA money as available in the current accounting.
Okay, is there a motion?
No, ma'am.
Second. Is there any discussion in the audience on this? All right, seeing none, any members of council have questions? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item 23.
Mayor, members of council, staff, my name is Laura Curran, I'd like to talk about the Planning Commission Report, which is included on Item Number 23. I had the opportunity last Thursday to attend the Planning Commission meeting, and in that Planning Commission meeting, they discussed the proposed settlement agreement for Morningside Recovery. So, um, my concern, I'd like to talk about the zoning implementation agreement, Section 3, Item 5, and I have some concerns about the clarity of the agreement. It says in Section 3, Item 5, that there will be only one treatment home or sober-living facility per block, and no facilities facing each other. So, I wasn't really familiar with the locations at 4823 A and B River and 5015 A and B River, so I went and looked at them, tried to understand it. What I found is that each of these is a duplex where one unit is on the bottom and one unit is on the top, and in the tax assessor roles, there are a single parcel, and on the city roles, according, which I confirm with staff, there are a single parcel. So, I'm a bit confused about the zoning agreement, and I think we need to make sure that it's well-designed. So, um, if the units are stacked on top of each other, it looks on the face like we have two residential units, and however, we kind of have created a conflict. If the duplexes are a single unit in order to satisfy the one-per-block designation, then what we probably have is a seven-and-over licensed facility, or a sober-living facility, depending on how they decide to operate them, and in that case, they should probably be regulated as such and subject to state regulation and to the integral facilities definition. And I would like to point out that contrary to the last paragraph on Page 19, the integral facilities definition, which it says Judge Saldana blocked the city's enforcement of, is actually, um, you know, the preliminary induction was vacated when the agreement was sober-living by the sea was completed, so the integral facilities definition stands. So if the city chose to enforce this as one-per-block, it could, if it applied to integral facilities definition. So, that's how you'd get to one-per-block. But on the other hand, if these duplex units, 4823 A and B and 5015 A and B are two separate units at each address, and remember, they're stacked on top of each other, have you all seen them? Then we have two-per-block, at least the way I count it, and so I think we're setting up a conflict in the agreement. Do we have one-per-block, or do we have two-per-block? And then if you take the block definition further, it's actually a block of 16, 617 feet, it doesn't clarify how far apart these would be from other residential treatment units. Okay. I have one other comment, the zoning agreement, we're completing a zoning agreement as part of, part of a settlement agreement, um, to this proposal, while we're looking at a zoning agreement to the general plan. And how can you complete a zoning agreement when you know that you're going to be with a particular operator, when right after that, you're going to complete a zoning agreement to your general plan? Are we going to review this zoning agreement if the general plan has different specifications, and will they apply? So, again, I know there's been a lot of work on this, but my major question here is, do we have one residential unit per block, or do we have two? And if so, then how does that mesh with the agreement's definition? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other speakers on this panel?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Denise Oberman. I also have come to speak on the proposed amendment, not amendment, but settlement agreement, the zoning and public interest agreement with Morningside Recovery. I also attended the Planning Commission, had the opportunity to read the staff report and hear various testimony. Just two comments that raise some concern, but before that, I would like to commend the council for its objective of settlement and management of legal expense, we commend that objective. First of all, two concerns. First is that this agreement is not consistent with the general plan in its current form, in that it proposes to insert an institutional business use of multiple locations in dense residential neighborhoods that are zoned for residential, and most specifically, the coastal neighborhood defined as the quote peninsula zone, where there is an already existing demonstrate over-concentration of these uses. So, we would urge a reconsideration of, of the proposed long-term entitlement of the period of 25 years, because make no mistake about it, it does inherently and probably irreparably change the character, residential character of the neighborhood, and effectively restricts and discourages other uses which would land to the integrity and safety of the neighborhoods, such as childcare centers, elementary schools, et cetera, which could in turn discourage young families from wanting to move in or to stay in these neighborhoods. My second concern that I would like to point out and ask that there be some re-crafting or careful examination of the text, is that the agreement on Page 2, this is of the zoning and public interest agreement, provides that Morningside may quote "move clients from its current facilities to other properties," end of quote, without any accompanying review or controls. This could actually increase the number of facilities in the area, and, which would be particularly of concern in areas that are over-concentrated. There, there are ways to address this concern by modifying the agreement to explicitly provide for the following. The first would be notice to this, providing for requirement to notice the city of intent to relocate with the appropriate city review and approval to ensure, to assure that other conditions are met, and that the proposed new location does not conflict with the intent of the agreement or the city's ordinances. Secondly, two, along with the notice, review and approval of the proposed new location, two, administer formal cessation or curtailment of approval of the use at the current facility's location, and provide, and, and also have administrative procedures to assure that in fact, the use is vacated and, and closed concurrent with the opening of a new facility. And notice there would be important to make that in a formal way clear, both to the operator and to the property owner, as to the permanent curtailment of the approval of the use in the current location. And then lastly, that the city approval of a proposed new location be subject to a legitimate public use review process to assure that both the public and the disabled are protected. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers there? This was sort of a creative use of the minutes of the Planning Commission to get to this topic, but I know it's an important issue to a lot of people. topic, but I know it's an important issue to a lot of people. The actual item that the council has before it is to receive and file the agenda from the last Thursday's meeting from the commission. Is there a motion on that?
No.
Okay, Mr. Hand.
I'll second, along with the second, though, we did have recommendations from the planning commission, I guess, regarding this agreement, and so these comments, I think, are timely for us to fold into consideration of those other items as we're thinking about this before it comes to council.
We'll take all these comments into consideration, along with the planning commission, before we bring this matter to you for final approval.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Oral reports from City Council members on committee activities, Councilmember Salich.
I have none, Mr. Ed.
Councilmember Rosansky.
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hand.
None, thank you.
Councilmember Diggle.
None, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner.
Nothing.
Councilmember Webb.
None.
And I have none. Okay, so now we're on to public comments. Madam City Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Is there anyone in the public, in the audience, wishing to make public comments tonight, on matters not on the agenda?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom Billings. Tonight I'd like to speak to a topic, subject, that has been largely ignored around the country, and in California, for quite a while, up until recent months, and that is immigration, illegal immigration. As we know, City of Costa Mesa and Yorba Linda have established themselves as rule of the city of law, and tonight, as we speak, the City of Orange is going to vote on their own resolution. We can no longer ignore this issue for political reasons, for convenience, because it actually impacts our lives, it impacts the cost of the city for public safety, for health costs, for education, and so tonight, I have a copy of the City of Orange's resolution, which I'd like to just, you know, give you guys for reference. And basically, what their resolution is saying is basically, they're just going, they're going to follow and enforce the federal law. They're not saying I'm going to support, you know, I know Arizona has been a controversial, but it basically mirrors the federal law, but basically, that's all the resolution, you can read it, that it follows the federal law. To ignore it is, we just can't ignore it anymore. It impacts, you know, too much with our city, and so I encourage the council to consider, you know, to take in a position to support the federal law, to have your police force support the federal law, and enforce it. And let me just give you one quick example. I know a manager of a restaurant in Costa Mesa, I won't mention the name, it's a large restaurant, she shared with me confidentially that ninety percent of their employees are illegal, okay? And people say, well, those are jobs that American citizens don't want. Well, actually, she's getting a lot of Americans applying for those jobs now because of the economy. And the bigger impact is that the relatives and spouses of, or families of those illegals are getting their healthcare benefits and so forth, which again, impacts the city with more, you know, public safety and so forth. So, you know, it's just, it's something we no longer can ignore, I would like you to consider it for our city, you know, take a position, and it's a position of strength, and it puts out a message to our, to us, the residents, you know, that you're standing up for right versus wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, are there any other members of the audience who should make public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period, and we will go to public hearings. The first item is item twenty-six, proposed assessment district number one hundred. Mr. Hand.
Mr. Mayor, I'll have to recuse myself, my home is in that district, and so I'll be vacating the podium while there is consideration of this item. I guess I can come back after this is temporarily closed, can I not, and consider the other agenda item?
Yes, you may come back.
Let me note that this is the time and place fixed for the public hearings on protests or objections to the resolution of intention, assessment district engineers' report, proposed assessments, and all other matters related to assessment district number one hundred, and to the designation of the area as an underground utilities district. All written protests and all ballots regarding assessment district number one hundred must be received by the city clerk prior to the closing of the public hearing. Ballots will be tabulated in the council conference room, and this will be open to the public. May I invite the staff now to make a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Iris Lee, from our public, award-winning Iris Lee will make the presentation.
Well, thank you, Dave. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council, Iris Lee with the Public Works Department. Tonight, staff is recommending the opening of public hearing for a formation of assessment district number one hundred. This is for the undergrounding of the overhead facilities, including electrical telephone and cable services in the area generally bounded by Thirteenth Street, Balboa Boulevard, Adams, and Oceanfront, for a total cost of four point three four five million dollars. Upon the completion of hearing of the public testimony and the closing of the public hearing, staff will be counting the ballots next door in the council conference room, and if a majority protest does not exist and council desires to form the district, there are two resolutions that staff is recommending to adopt. First one is resolution over, overruling protests, approving the final engineer's report, levying assessments, and approving the improvements and any associated work of the assessment district, and the second one is to approve the contracts of the utility companies to do the work. Prior to turning it over to our assessment engineer, Joan Cox, for a brief summary of the work associated with the district, and we do have replacement ballots if any members of the public would like to submit their ballot or change the ballot that they casted.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, it's a pleasure to be before you again tonight. Just very briefly, the boundaries of the assessment district include all parcels that receive special benefit from the undergrounding of the overhead utility distribution lines and poles between Balboa Boulevard and Oceanfront, from Thirteenth Street, which is bounded by Newport Elementary School, to Adams Street, and this district is directly adjacent to previous assessment district ninety-nine dash two, and to the west, and assessment district seventy-five to the east. The city is also proposing water and sewer line projects in conjunction with the undergrounding project. The total proposed assessment amount for the undergrounding project is four million three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The assessment is apportioned based on the proportional special benefit each parcel receives. There are two hundred and seventy-four parcels within the assessment district, and include single-family homes, multifamily residential, and non-residential land uses. The basis of the assessment is property size, and it's rounded to the nearest one hundred square feet. Residential property sizes range from twelve hundred square feet all the way to seventy-five hundred square feet, and the median property size in the assessment district is twenty-four hundred square feet. The specific benefits to properties include improved streetscape aesthetics, and when we say streetscape, we do include alleys in that definition, improved connection related to the reduced threat of service interruption due to downlines and poles, as well as having all-new distribution wires and equipment, and additional safety related to the reduced threat of downlines and poles, which relate to, again, reduced property damage and possibility of fire. Almost all properties received the same benefits, except for a few parcels on the fringes of the assessment district. The median assessment amount for assessment district one hundred is thirteen thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars. Residential property assessments range from about twenty-nine hundred dollars to forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the assessment ballots will be opened and tabulated, and the results of the tabulation will be available before the end of this council meeting. If more assessments are voted no than yes, then a majority protest has been received and the assessment district cannot be formed. If there is no majority protest, then the city council may consider establishing the assessment district. The final engineer's report, which has been submitted to you for your consideration if no majority protest exists, is the same as was preliminarily approved on April thirteenth, and I believe that the proposed assessments provided in the report are in proportion to the special benefits received by the properties within this assessment district. With that, any questions? You have to answer them.
Thank you. Is there any additional staff report to be made? All right. At this time, what I would like to do is open the hearing for a public discussion. I would like to first invite those who are against the proposed formation of the district, who wish to speak, to come and speak, and if you would please identify yourself and your property address. Are there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the district?
Hi, I'm Margaret Shannon Hamilton, in two sixteen East Oceanfront, and I would respectfully request that in this kind of economy where things are so tight, that we don't add another burden to homeowners who may be on the verge. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other speakers in opposition? All right, seeing none. Are there speakers in support of the formation of the district who would like to speak at this time? Please come forward.
William Shaver, owner of a small piece of property at seven nineteen West Balboa. I'm in favor of it. I signed the ballot in favor of it, but there's some things I don't understand. I understand what we're paying for is underground utilities up to our property line. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor.
Then we pay for the property, for the line to come from our property line to our circuit breaker box. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We pay for the, at the same time, from the telephone cable and the, and the TV cable. Is it all done in one package? By one contractor?
The work that's within the public right-of-way is all done by one contractor, that is true.
I'm talking within my property.
And within your property, you would hire a private contractor, and you could have them do all of those.
Is there a list of contractors and an estimate of that cost?
We don't, we don't, as a city, as a public entity, we can't endorse any contractors. We would, we would expect that you would go out on your own and solicit bids from various electrical contractors in the area.
Typically, there's several contractors that are looking to do that kind of work in these, in the assessment districts, and they'll almost certainly contact you to see if you're interested, or you can probably talk to your neighbors and see who they're using.
Well, I'm not sure any of the neighbors have any contractors at this time.
Well, it's probably premature right now, because that usually doesn't happen until the work is coming closer to the end, so probably would be another year before you would even start thinking about that.
But there have been contractors in other assessment districts who have done the same sort of work, who are available.
Yeah.
I think we could help to that extent in providing a list, especially who has a business license to do that work. We could certainly provide that to you, that would be.
Just through my experience in my neighborhood, we, they undergrounded about four hundred fifty homes, and I'd say three contractors probably did ninety percent of the work there.
Well, that's good. Any estimate of the cost per foot?
You know, it's usually not a cost per foot kind of a thing, it varies from house to house, depending on what your service is now. Sometimes you have to upgrade your panel on your building, depends on how far you have to run your line from where the property line is to the panel, and, you know, do you have concrete that they have to dig up, or is it a dirt strip? So, I'll just tell you, in my experience, it was about three thousand dollars, and I think a lot of people in my neighborhood paid that kind of money, but it can run more, depending on where you have to run your line.
But that's paid separately, and it's not included in the budget.
Paid separately by you, to the contractor.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers in favor of formation of the assessment district? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to announce that all written protests and ballots must have been received by the city clerk at this time. If you have any additional ballots, please bring them forward. Any additional ballots?
Yes.
The late precincts. All right. What's that? Are there anyone who wishes to change their ballot, who was previously voted? All right, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. The votes are going to be tabulated, and we're going to continue this item until we have the results of the vote, and then we will come back and have it announced, and the council will take action at that time based on the results of the vote. Thank you all very much.
Yes, and you, those who are interested in watching the counting of the ballots, that's going to be in the conference room next door, it should take a few minutes, and then we'll finish this up tonight before we all go home.
Okay. Next item is item twenty-seven.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this item involves a Jamboree Bridge, Jamboree Road bridge widening, and it proposes the adoption of a resolution of necessity to acquire a portion of real property at thirty-six oh one Jamboree Road by eminent domain. Dave Webb, I believe, is going to make the staff presentation for you.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. As alluded to, this is action tonight where we're requesting is to adopt a resolution of necessity to acquire a portion of real property at thirty-six oh one Jamboree Road. If you recall, Jamboree Road, we're looking to widen the bridge by twenty-two feet, adding two through lanes on the bridge. We need to buy property from three parcels, two of which we, one actually has taken an action that we've had a settlement on, another one will be coming to you shortly, we believe we have a settlement on. This particular property, though, we did start negotiations with them, and we couldn't come to terms in that. So, back in January of this year, we actually sent them the offer, and we didn't ever receive a counteroffer, we received some various notions that we think the price is too low, that we feel that we should get a lot more money for this, but we haven't been able to come to terms in that. So, what we'd like to do tonight is start the process while we continue to negotiate, but also start the process of eminent domain, which requires this resolution of necessity to acquire the property. Our next step from this point would be if we can't reach negotiations, we would do a taking of the property within a hundred and twenty days, I believe, is the state law, to get an immediate order of possession. We can do this because there is no building displacement, taking of buildings or tenants, we're just looking at a landscape area. So, we'd like to move forward with this at your leisure and pleasure tonight.
Are there any questions for Mr. Webb? Or is there a motion?
I'd like to move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion?
Before the vote, Mr. Mayor, may I just ask Mr. Webb one question?
Sure.
Mr. Webb, in the design of this project, was the design developed such that the public interest was required and a minimum impact upon private resources?
I believe this project started back in two thousand and four, and there were five alternatives they looked at in order to find the best alignment, and they did take in account the least impact of public property and private property, and this alignment that addresses these three properties was the best chosen. So, we did look at those items.
Thank you. Let me say this before, first of all, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter? Before we vote, let me make this observation, because eminent domain is a controversial topic, and in fact, in our city, we passed a charter amendment, I wrote it, my council colleagues here signed the arguments for it, and the council unanimously put it on the ballot, that prohibits the use of eminent domain for economic development purposes and taking private property and turning it over to somebody else's private property use. But eminent domain exists because there's always one property owner for an important public project, who if they are the last holdout, can hold up the government and taxpayers for more money than the parcel is worth, and that's why eminent domain allows the determination of a fair price for both the property owner and the taxpayers to acquire that parcel, and that's precisely the situation that we find ourselves in here. So, with that, please vote.
Well, I have a comment. Thank you. I'm going to oppose the motion. I think that the power of eminent domain, it's one of the most fearsome and awesome powers that government has, and it's protected under our constitution in how government takes private property. I think that this is a premature action, and we should only be doing this as a last resort. I think our offer is inequitable to the agreement that was made earlier this evening, and I think we should continue to negotiate with the property owner. This resolution of necessity, it's the first step to the eminent domain process, and we shouldn't be using it for negotiating leverage or things of that nature, that we should negotiate in good faith with the property owner, and I would add that once we take this step, we are then at risk of paying all And I would add that once we take this step, we are then at risk of paying all of the property owner's legal costs, his condemnation costs, not just the $5,000 and any of the other consultants that he retains. So with that, I'm going to oppose the motion.
Thank you. Just to clarify this, Webb, we did attempt to negotiate with this property owner, is that correct?
We did. We did an appraisal and then we sent them a legal offer. And the offer actually was back in January 25th of 2010. We have met with him a couple of times in the meantime, but we have failed to get an actual counter offer. We've just got verbal indications. We did get a letter from the property owner that said we might as well start the eminent domain process. The last direction we had from the council was we were going to continue to negotiate while we moved forward with eminent domain.
And so that was his response to our negotiations, to tell him, "Go ahead and, you know, condemn me."
From his attorney, yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, but he did submit a letter opposing the adoption of the resolution of necessity.
Any other comments? Please vote.
With Councilmember Selig voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. Item 28, fiscal year 2010-11 proposed budget hearing.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, you've had a series of meetings, mostly in study session, but a couple of nighttime sessions about the proposed budget. As a part of the fiscal sustainability plan that you adopted in January, we have tried to keep you apprised of the budget's situation and progress as we move forward towards adoption. This item is your formal, the chance to hold the public hearing, allow the public input on the proposed budget. Those budget documents are available online and in the city clerk's office. They're fairly thick documents that describe a detailed budget as well as the capital improvement program. So tonight, there's that opportunity for the public to comment. And there's also the typical product that the council uses called a budget checklist to potentially add items to corrections that the staff is recommending. And you'll see in your staff report on page three are the staff's proposed budget checklist items. And a lot of them are ministerial types of things. They're not typical checklist items, but you do have to adopt this to amend the budget that you last saw as proposed. So this is your chance to take a look at that budget checklist and/or add to it or subtract to it with my gentle caveat that we know this is a tight budget year, so we're hoping to not have the budget checklist changed that much, as well as, again, taking public input on this item.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Grider.
Yeah, I had one comment and one question. I'll go with the question first. On page 15 of my proposed budget detail, it talks about a contribution on my right page there. There we go. 5901 donations and contributions and other revenue.
I may ask Tracy to help me out here because...
It says that, and I can't identify where that's coming from.
I'll find out the specific source of that revenue. That's usually some kind of donation we receive from outside.
Actually, I'll take a look at it over your shoulder if you wanted, just to see.
Because it's a significant amount.
Oh, Tracy, you want to take a look?
And the other, just the comment I would make, at our Cronemar bid meeting, which is made up largely of merchants, we talked about the budget briefly and particularly about the revenue forecasts. And they were very dubious about the sales tax forecast. Now, I know we have people that that's what they do for a living, but these are the people on the ground, and they were saying maybe 1% to 2% if it was good. So I'm hoping that we're really, really careful there and really sure of our projections because that was sobering to me.
I respect that comment, and I know Tracy may chime in too, and I'll test my own knowledge of this. Remember, we're coming off a year where the state readjusted our sales tax receipts significantly lower, not because of the economy, but because of a mistake associated with that thing called the triple flip. So that artificially depressed our sales tax. Then we're also, so we're climbing up from that, plus having the new Nordstrom available. But I'll let Finance Director Tracy McCrainer comment about how projections work and making sure I'm getting my facts straight.
You are correct. On the 1.5, I'm going to double check for you, but I believe it might be Oasis.
Oh.
Additional donations, but I will double check on that. On the sales tax, we have been working diligently with our sales tax consultant and the state. And although we did increase our sales tax projection from back in February, it was based on the first quarter of this year coming in a lot better than we thought. And that's before the Nordstrom, which Dave is correct. We're also comparing it to 2010 being a very bad year for sales tax overall. We were down in the 11%, 12% negative mark about midway through the year. We're planning on being about a negative 6%. We're much better off, obviously, than the state or the county. And with our projections coming in, it's based, our increase is based on 2010, which was actually, we anticipate, to be the lowest year for sales tax for the city of Newport Beach. So we are keeping an eye on that. We actually went much more conservative than our consultants think, Nick O'Hara and the Municipal Revenue Advisors Group. And we didn't take some state estimates that it would be higher as well. One thing I do think, you know, aside from the Nordstrom, the activity so far from January going forward is better off than we had anticipated. So we felt very comfortable increasing the rate for all of 2011, but we will be keeping and monitoring that on a monthly basis.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, so the purpose of this checklist is to fold it into the budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then with payroll being our single largest expense, our discussion at Finance Committee was that there'd be a council checklist. In addition to that, there would be a new positions checklist?
And we'd like to bring those to you on the 22nd.
Okay, that makes sense.
And if I could clarify, I talked with Teri Cassidy. She also has an item that night, so we're going to work together to have the same reclassification list, item by item, and new positions list in both our presentations. And so you'll have a chance to review each position individually.
Okay, so it's actually a checklist that the council could say yay or no.
Yes or no.
Okay. And then also, if you could present some comparison as where we are relative to the E-RIP. I know we all went along with the idea of reducing headcount, so I kind of want to understand where we are in implementing that E-RIP.
And Susan and I are working on the few questions we had yesterday, so we could fold that into our presentation, if that's okay. I'll also contact you offline to go over those questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hen.
Yeah, actually, to follow up on the E-RIP, I think the request was, when we approved that, that there would be a specific comparison, actual savings versus projected savings. So...
With six months under a belt?
Yes. Is that what you're intending to give us?
Yes.
Okay. And then secondly, I had asked for some ideas regarding the ability to get the wayfinding sign program in the budget, and I haven't seen anything. Will we be seeing something for that for the 22nd?
Yes, I'm working with Tracy in terms of what operational savings we may have in the current year that may lead us to put that on the checklist responsibly, so.
Okay, so there'll be, there's opportunity for a few items, I guess, in some decision making on the 22nd.
I thought that on the wayfinding, we had talked about letting the bids...
We did. We did authorize, I think, the Marine Avenue to go ahead and contract for, I think, three signs. But that was just those three signs. And the Economic Development Committee actually have recommended that we try to find a way to get the whole program implemented since it has been completely teed up, costed, ready to go, just for the lack of funding. So the idea was not to expand the budget to incorporate that, but to see if there was another item that we would rather do this than in the budget, so.
Okay. Any other council comments? Thank you, Tracy. Let me open this up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Please come forward. All right, seeing none, bring this back. The action before you is indicated here to, we've conducted the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, we've taken public input. The action item is to direct the preparation of the budget resolution. Is there a motion?
I'll move the action.
Second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item 29, vacation of an existing storm drain easement and acceptance of new storm drain easements at 445 East Coast Highway.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, tonight, we're essentially, Newport Beach Cars Incorporated, the owner of the parcel at 445 East Coast Highway, wants to expand their showroom at their existing auto dealership, Newport Auto Center. And in order to do that, they need to relocate a 18-inch storm drain line that's within a 15-foot easement. So tonight, we're asking you to have a hear, open and close a hearing for the vacation of the existing storm drain easement, and then we'll concurrently accept the new storm drain easement so that they can relocate upon approval of their project. Apparently, they are at the Coastal Commission now, looking for that approval.
All right, let me open the public hearing.
I'll move the item.
Mr. Rozansky, is there a motion?
Second.
Second. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is report on the update of the city council's 2010 goals and projects. Mr. Kiff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is probably our second time before you with an update on the 2010 council goals that you adopted in January of this year. There is a brief summary of implementation of each of these. I may go through a couple of them and highlight them. You have that to read, and please stop me if I skipped over something. Starting with the airport, we've been making some good progress on our corridor cities effort. We next move into a more detailed discussion about negotiations of the extension of the settlement agreement with Supervisor Morlock. You should expect to see that relatively soon. On the public safety item, one of the key things that I've been working on is the hiring of a new police chief. Bob Lumen will leave service on June 30, and I expect to be able to name a new police chief maybe within about seven or eight days, so looking forward to that announcement. Fiscal sustainability plan, we mentioned that. We believe we've been pretty consistent in reporting things to you that way. You've expressed, always expressed a strong interest in reviewing the facility's financing plan, which we take to the Finance Committee regularly. On harbor fees, that's been a goal that I noted as behind its initial schedule, and I have a commitment to work with the Finance Department and Harbor Resources. And we even had a discussion with some Harbor Commission members yesterday to work on that. And I know it's a key issue for all of you to make sure that those harbor fees are appropriately levied. Results-based budgeting, this is an important thing that I know Assistant City Manager Smith will be working on with me and with Jan Perkins as we move the next budget into something that's more performance-based or program-based. Restructuring continues. I don't think the public notices that very much, and that's a good thing because it's trying to retool city government without a significant impact to the public. So you saw a little bit of it today in study session where we'll be contracting out water meter reading. There's some other things that will be next up. Citizen satisfaction survey, we hope to have that out this month. So we're working some things through with the same consultant we used last time, so we're hopeful that the residents will get a few calls about the satisfaction survey. So expect that if you're at home and listening and you get a call from a city polling company that's under contract with the city. And obviously, be candid with us. We want to hear how we're doing. City charter update, major effort by the city attorney's office and human resources and a lot of different departments to update the city charter and with that key input from the volunteer groups, that was the Charter Update Commission. And that's been on target to be brought to you in July. The mayor's 24-hour customer service standard, we've been trying our best, I think, to keep to that. We've had some successes, and every now and then we miss it, but we still talk about that at the management team level to keep that up. Development services restructuring, another thing that I'm working on with Dana. We had a good meeting today with members of the design community, the architects, to go over how some of that might work. So we'll start to roll that out in a little bit more detail now that Dana's here. You heard about Lower Bay dredging? Some good news. It was really nice to hear Colonel Magnus say that he's pretty sure this is going to happen and it'll be under construction. That's really exciting, kind of sends a chill down our spine because it's been 70 years since the bay's been dredged. So it's never been dredged, except little parts of it. Still thumbing through, Councilmember Hen is working with the staff on the planning of the Lido Marina Village via a porto and nearby property site, so we have an RFP prepared that we'll take a look at that. John Wayne Air Quality Study, that's a thing that's of interest to the public. That's taken a lot longer than I had hoped, but the PhD that's working on it is being very diligent about her analysis, and we hope to see something at the end of June or start of July, so that's coming up. Councilmember Daigle talked about the Rhine Channel dredging. There's an MND that's actually coming out soon, not in May, as was our original goal, but it's coming out within the next couple of weeks. And the city attorney and I will get together on that issue you raised about the neighboring property owners.
Dave, have we completed all of the sediment sample testing? And do we have all the data back now on the sediment and where there's a problem and where isn't, and the nature of the problem, et cetera? Is there any testing left to be?
I believe we're done. We have, and the goal was to show where it is and what the quantity is. And we do have that quantity number now, and it's about, actually, Councilmember Daigle may check me, I think it's about 180,000 or 200,000, which is roughly 20% to 30% of the overall project has to be deposited in Port of Long Beach site.
In the Port of Long Beach? But then, how much has to go out to LA 3? Is it still up in the...
The remainder of that, so. Well, you know what? Rather than speaking off the cuff, I should probably report that back to you directly.
Yeah, I'm really curious because this is the key issue, you know, how much of it's...
It's a significant amount. It wasn't an amount that blew our socks off in terms of unexpectedly high amount that needed to go to the Port of Long Beach.
It strikes me that that number is a good bit lower than what we, at one time, were thinking it might be. But, well, anyway, when you get it...
Yeah, let me get it exactly, so...
Just a comment too on number six, sea level change. I see a proposal to raise the seawall on Babo Island, and obviously, that's about the only thing you probably can do there. But I'm hoping that as we project along, that we consider things besides simply seawalls. I hope we'll explore all sorts of alternatives because certainly, we don't want to have one long wall from San Francisco to San Diego, particularly Long Beach.
It looks like, what was it, Holland or...
Yeah, the Great Wall of the Pacific.
Is your thought, oh, go ahead.
It shouldn't just be Babo Island.
That's right.
...that has bulkheads that are at or at a place where they need to be raised if we...
Well, there are aspects along Bayside, too.
Right, but along the ocean, too, there may be some alternatives that we can look at before.
If we put a big wall up along the ocean beaches, that might solve some of our, you know, summer crowd problems.
It might cut our lifeguard costs down, too.
The Civic Center Public Art, I'm into six now, number 13. You will see something coming to you, I believe, the next meeting that the mayor has been working on hard with the city attorney and with Oakma, March County Museum of Art, that proposes a pretty great public-private partnership for the Civic Center's Sculpture Park. So you'll see that coming back to you. Folks are all too aware of Sunset Ridge Park, and again, you passed the EIR for Marina Park just at your last meeting, so that goes off to Coastal. And then tonight, you approved during the consent calendar, a contract with a Coastal Advocate that will help us move that project and hopefully Sunset Ridge and maybe anything else we need up there through Coastal, including Lower Newport Bay and the Rhine Channel. Oasis Senior Center, always a good news project to date, on target. And then tonight, you approved a little bit less than $1 million worth of furnishings, fixtures and equipment for that. So a tremendous project when that opens, hopefully, in early fall.
On Buck Gully and the fire hazard, I've asked the city attorney to take a second look at the need for an EIR because we've been waiting for the fire marshal, waiting for the state fire marshal, and he's like Godot.
I can't believe how long we've been waiting.
I know. So he's just going to take a second look at it and make sure that that is a requirement because if not, then we could move along.
Traffic management, that's always an issue, a good issue for the folks at home. I was with Dana and we took another quick little tour of the traffic management... I was with Dana and we took another quick little tour of the traffic management system in City Hall. And folks at home, I think, will be thankful to know how well we monitor intersections and how many we have under control now to let more traffic flow through real time. And that that program continues to expand, so good work there by Public Works. I think that would probably, oh, finally, the current City Hall site. As the dirt keeps moving over at the new Civic Center site, that question keeps coming up, so I'd like I'll be working with the mayor on some type of work plan to bring to you for full council blessing associated with the new City Hall site to decide when and where and maybe what process that might entail. So with that, Mr. Mayor, questions or comments?
Questions for Mr. Kiff?
Yeah, I do.
Councilmember Rozansky.
So going back to sort of the beginning here, the harbor fees, maybe I missed it, but what's our schedule now on trying to get that resolved?
I was purposely vague, Councilmember Rozansky.
I know you were. That's why I'm purposely asking the question. That's why I've asked the question every two or three months in the last two or three years.
Let me for the council's edification and hopefully I'll answer Mr. Rozansky's question at the end. There are a couple of different types of there are two different types of fees, basically. There is the fee that is a cost of providing the service, like when Harbor Resources goes out and provides an inspection or an eelgrass test associated with the RGP 54. So that is very easy to determine what that is. It's the amount of hours it takes for Chris or Shannon or Lisa to do that. Then there is the other type of fee, which isn't really a fee. It's the fair market value of a private entity's use of a public asset, and that is the assets over the water. And those could be moorings, those could be commercial docks, those could be the Balboa Yacht Basin where all of our slips are, as well as the apartments and the garages there. What we have proposed doing is an appraisal of the latter things that would tie in the commercial, the moorings, the Balboa Yacht Basin, and get that out hopefully fairly quickly. The challenge is always to pick the right appraiser because whoever we pick seems to get attacked by somebody, so.
Isn't that just the nature of the beast?
I think it's the nature of the beast, and I you folks have been pretty strong about saying that. I would I don't want to go down that path, though, without getting at least some support as to the appraisal methodology. So Councilmember Selich and Councilmember Gardner met with a couple of members of the Harbor Commission yesterday on some issues they've had concerns about. And I think we agreed at that meeting that we would involve one or two of those members in meeting with the appraiser, selecting the methodology, and hopefully getting a little bit better buy-in as that goes forward. It's my goal to do this as soon as possible, and if I could set a date, I'm going to try for October 1st now to have that in and done. Because it's important to me, it's important to the city's budget that we especially cover the additional costs of the mooring administration agreement with the sheriff. So all that plays into it.
Why can't the mooring administration agreement from the sheriff be totally separate from the rest of that? And it's a fixed item. It's something that we know is there, we something that we know is costing us more than it did last year. Why can't that be distributed equally amongst each mooring unit as something that they asked for? We gave it to them. It costs us more money. They should be paying their share. And then you do your appraisals. If for some reason or another, your appraisers appraisals don't support that increase, at least we have tried to manage and collect the fees that we know are out of pocket. You talk about the appraisal in October 1st. I think that you had that same conversation about two years ago, and we still don't have something that's going. And I would say if you would be extremely lucky to have something going before the council in another year. But this is an item that we have documented. We've had hearings, we've supported it. It's a fixed amount of money, and it goes up a little bit each year. Why can't we just tack that on right now?
If you would like to suggest that I include that in the budget proposal, that the harbor fees be raised at the same to cover this first year's costs of the of the mooring administration.
I can, I'd like to move to do that right now.
What's what's the delta in those sheriff contracts?
Remember, the sheriff contract steps up over five years to increase our costs by, I think, about $180,000 a year. So the first year's bite is 30 to 40. And I agree with you, Councilmember Webb, that's a very reasonable thing to do, and I'll talk with Tracy about proposing that in the in the budget as a revenue. But it's I always like to see if there are four fans of that versus just one.
I'd support Councilman Webb on that. I think so. I'm a big fan.
I see five fans.
So in ballpark, how many moorings do we have?
We have 1,200 moorings.
So you're talking about 100 and something thousand over 12,000.
Yeah, although I think that we would match it with actual costs, so the actual costs in this first year are lower.
All right.
Well, no, not finished. Sorry. So that's the second that was the latter half. What about the first half? You said the part that we can easily calculate. Are we at where we need to be on that or are there adjustments that need to be made?
We have our costs, we've met I've met now twice with the the fee study consultant. That's on track, I think, for. Tracy behind there? No, she scooted out. That's on track for the next couple of months to bring back to you, and we'll have that in there.
So in the next couple of months, we'll see that.
So should I commit to a date?
Sure.
I'll tell you what, can I commit?
Has it stopped anyone in the past from committing to a date that we didn't manage to meet?
Can I? Let me work with Tracy and figure out what time.
It didn't start with Dave. It started before you got here. We've been studying this thing. We had we paid a lot of guys with PhDs to study this, and we've paid, you know, we got reports, and then we seem to never did anything with them, and now we're back to square one. And I mean, it can't be that difficult to go to three other harbors and find out what they're leasing their docks for and what they're leasing their moorings for.
If that's the methodology you want to use, we have that.
That's the methodology I want to use.
I could bring that forward tomorrow.
That's the methodology I want to use because I think that's what the fair market value is. We go out into our own harbor and find out what private people are leasing their docks for. And that's, you know, I'm a real estate broker, or at least I used to be. And, you know, I that's what comps are. You go out and find a comp and you say, hey, I've got three comps and you can peg the value. So I don't see where.
It's only part of the problem.
Well, maybe I need to get better educated on it, but it can't it's not an insurmountable problem, certainly.
No, it's not.
Let's do lunch.
Okay. All right. You already covered the City Hall stuff. I would like to get more in the loop on the City Hall reuse, and I think we need to have some type of a presentation here at council because it seems to be that that discussion is moving forward. And I know I have an interest in it. I don't know about the other councilmembers here, but I certainly like to have a full, robust discussion as to what happens to this site once we relocate to the to the new site. Also, you had a thing in here on the media, NBTV and some of that. I know there were some discussions as to that we might be curtailing some of the programming or doing it differently.
You're so afraid you're going to lose big bets.
No, not really, quite honestly. I was just curious.
But you didn't know we're putting it into syndication.
Yeah, really? No, then I'll be getting the big bucks. But I mean, have you made any decisions as to that or?
Let me ask you a question back as the members of the Media and Communications Committee. Did you feel like you gave Tara specific direction after the survey came back? And if you didn't, maybe we should tee that up for you again.
No, she was going to come back with more information.
Yeah, I don't know that we did really discuss the future of it, but I, you know.
Can I wait and use that committee process to look at that then?
Yeah, no, I was just curious if, I mean, if that's how you're going to approach it or if there's something.
That was exactly it, yeah.
And I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Any other council comments? The action here is to receive and file. We've already asked, I think, for public comment on this. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I make that motion, and I just wanted to state I really support the direction of the city, you know, where we're going these days, so.
With the caveat, we directed staff to go ahead on this mooring.
I heard you.
Okay? Please, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, and Mayor, we have to.
All right, I understand we have a report back on the election results of the assessment district formation. May I ask someone to make that report?
Just to test for the record, if I may, Councilmember Hen is once again stepped down from the dice.
It stays. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, based on the tabulations for the ballots received, 68% of the ballots were submitted in favor of the assessment district for a total assessment of $2,012,833. 32% of the votes were submitted in opposition for a total assessment of $968,340. Based on the ballot tabulation, it is appropriate for the City Council, if it is their desire, to proceed with the formation of the assessment district by adopting the resolution confirming the assessments. The resolution is the formal action declaring the results of the ballot procedure, ordering the acquisition of the improvements, confirming the assessments, and approving the assessment engineer's final report.
I move all those items.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I believe we've closed the public hearing. Is there any need for additional comment on this? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you all. Next item is motion for reconsideration. Is there any items to be reconsidered? All right, seeing now, we have two adjournments tonight, so please stay with me here for a moment. First is a friend of mine, and I think for many of us here, and that's Jane Willett. Jane is a former Newport Beach resident who passed away on May 3rd. Jane was a fourth-generation Californian and was born and raised in the Bay Area. Many in our community knew Jane and her husband of 35 years, Don Willett. Don formerly served on the board of Speak Up Newport. Jane attended San Francisco City College, the University of Colorado Boulder, and received a degree in sociology from Dominican College in San Rafael. Jane and Don moved to Orange County in 1980 and spent many years in Newport Beach before moving to Palm Desert three years ago. Jane enjoyed a wide range of hobbies and interests, including Republican politics, golf, bridge, sailing, ice skating, travel and tennis. Jane is survived by her husband, Don, son Bruce Brown, daughter-in-law Debbie Gardner, brother Jim Knowles, and many nieces, nephews and friends. A celebration of life will be held on June 12th at the Bahia Corinthian Yacht Club. Our sincere condolences to her family and friends. Paul Wagner passed away this past weekend in Newport Beach. He was the son of South Orange County Community College trustee and Assembly candidate, Don Wagner, and his wife Megan. Just 20 years of age, Paul was home for summer after completing his sophomore year at Purdue University. He was studying political science and inspired to attend law school. He also actively volunteered at the Indiana Veterans Home. Paul was an avid sports fan, especially baseball, and played catcher for Northwood High School in Irvine for four years. Paul is survived by his parents, Don and Megan, his sisters Kate and Stephanie, and the Wagner family, and his many friends are in our thoughts and prayers. We adjourn.